Good evening and welcome to the November 12, 2025 Orange Board of Selectmen's meeting. In the event of an emergency, use the hallway stairway to my right, the audience left, goes up to the rear parking lot, down the hallway out there would lead you to the firehouse, or up the stairs behind the wall with the clock on it through the double doors will put you out in front of the building on Orange Center Road. With that said, please rise for the pledge. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Welcome back, everybody. I'll start on that side with the iced coffee tonight.
Good evening, PJ Shanley.
Good evening, Judy Smith.
And Denny, Secretary to the Board.
Good evening, Owen Weaver, Town Council.
Good evening, John Carangelo.
Bill Crowe.
Good evening, Mitch Goldblatt.
Is there a motion to close the regular meeting and convene the public hearing? Public hearing is regarding the proposed ordinance to amend the code of the Town of Orange to delete section five and six of chapter 307 and add article four, illegal use of motorized recreational vehicles, and article five, street takeovers to chapter 366. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we're in the public hearing now at 7:01. Very good.
Does Ian have to read the whole thing?
Seven after. Just say when it was noted.
Notice is hereby given to residents and taxpayers of the Town of Orange that in accordance with section 3.4 of the Charter of the Town of Orange, the Orange Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, November 12, 2025, at 7:00 PM in the lower-level meeting room at the Town Hall, 617 Orange Center Road, Orange, Connecticut, on the proposed set forth below, on the purpose of amending the code of the Town of Orange to delete sections five and six of chapter 307 and to establish a new ordinance to add article four, illegal use of motorized recreational vehicles, and article five, street takeovers to chapter 366. Written comments will be received at the first selectmen's office until 4:00 PM Wednesday, November 12, 2025. Thereafter, comments should be presented at the public hearing dated at Orange, Connecticut, this 30th day of October, 2025, Board of Selectmen, Town of Orange. And this was published in the Milford Orange Times as well as within the Town Hall.
So we didn't receive any correspondence on it. This one hasn't had much discussion at all. I think most people that are aware of this one are on the Post Road, usually evenings, more so than anything, maybe going down the Post Road and all of a sudden you'll hear a lot of buzzing or lights, or you may hear it before you see it. Lot of motorcycles, usually popping wheelies or quads going down the road and like that. This was started, Justin Ellicker kind of stirred the pot on this one, and then pulled in a lot of other mayors and first selectmen. Both he started in the cog and then it went far beyond that. And the legislature took notice of that, which was great. And it gives the police department a little bit more latitude in the stopping and/or confiscation of vehicles. Then the communities have the option of putting them up for sale or destroying them. I think many may have seen them. A couple different municipalities have already done this with large-scale confiscations. And they, I saw one where they were driving a bulldozer over a whole group of them laid out in a parking lot, and another one with a payloader with a four-in-one bucket, kind of eating them like a dinosaur. They have found that to be a little bit better way to go because some of them have sold, put them up for sale, and then lo and behold, they ended up confiscating some of the same machines again. So it seems to be a good thing to do. I was going down the Post Road one night and I could hear one, and I knew it was right near me, but I couldn't see it. And it turned out it was a guy on a motorcycle doing a wheelie, but he was right behind me. So I couldn't see him until I stopped to turn into Home Depot. Then all of a sudden, he dropped because he was right behind me, and then I saw his headlight in my back window. I knew he was around, I just didn't know where he was because there was no light, you know, showing on the street. So I think this is a good improvement, and it enables our police department on this. Owen, would you like to speak to it more than that?
Sure, yeah. I mean, it's the board and the town's authority to enact this as Public Act 25-80. What this ordinance does, the town did have on the books some provisions regarding the use of recreational vehicles on town property. That was previously in chapter 307. We're moving that to chapter 366 and adopting the more robust penalty provisions of the Act. And then the second part is the street takeover, which is new legislation. There was no legislative authority to enact that. So I think you hit on the highlights of the Act, but I'm happy to answer any questions that anyone may have.
Mitch?
Couple of quick questions. You did say, Jim, that the, I think it's in here too, I just saw it. As far as when the vehicle is forfeited to the Town of Orange, it may, it shall be sold or destroyed. So we have that choice?
Neither are.
And I think you indicated at the last time, but now we're on the record, that that decision is up to the police department, the chief of police, basically, as to whether?
Police Department.
Okay.
I mean, we could send an encouragement.
It may make sense in certain cases to sell, you know, bring some money to the town. I understand your concern about it going back. We'll leave that to the police department to determine. Second question is, you just mentioned about a single person behind you popping a wheelie. Is that considered a street takeover? I've seen this as.
Oh, they were in a whole, it was a whole group of them.
Oh, okay. I thought it was just one person.
Oh, no, 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 no.
Okay. Gotcha. And then, Owen, a question for you on page eight. The first paragraph ends with a bracket. It says Connecticut General Statute, sections 14, 390, with a bracket with nothing in it. Is that?
Right. So it has not been codified yet. That actually was supposed to happen on November 1st. So as soon as my office gets the number, I'll fill that in, and the Charter allows the Town Council to make those technical changes.
That's fine. Same thing on page nine?
Yes.
A? Okay. I just was curious as to what that, was that just a mistake? Were you saying we can fill that in later?
No, when I drafted this, it wasn't codified in the general statutes yet.
Now it is?
Yeah, as of November 1st. So I'll get the number and fill it in.
Very good. Those are my questions. Thank you.
Any else?
Just a quick thought. I think this is excellent and long overdue, quite frankly. But on page six, for the posting by motorized recreational dealer, could we add something like the place next to Mr. Colcutts, Cycle Gear Places? There's always a couple motorcycles outside, just to get more awareness to what we're trying to do, what we're trying to accomplish.
So just walk me through that again. So you'd want that vendor to have to?
Well, not just the vendor, a place that specializes in clothing or protective gear for recreational vehicles and motorcycles.
Like, does a place at Peck &amp; Post? I think there's still a Peck &amp; Post.
Correct. It's literally right next to Mr. Colcutts.
That sells clothing for motorcycle riders and the such.
Right.
Well, I'm thinking if we're trying to raise awareness, right, with these postings, let's just put them as many places as we can so that people can see it.
Right. So, I mean, the statute defines what a motorized recreational vehicle dealer is. I don't know if that particular vendor would fall under that definition.
Okay.
I will say that the chief asked for the next section on page seven, the sale of gasoline for illegal purposes. I added that in at the request of the chief. So that's not a posting requirement that was necessarily required as part of the statute. So, yeah, we could certainly put in another provision that requires posting by another type of vendor. I'd have to think how to define that vendor.
I don't want to isolate one place.
Right. No, but that type of, like, for example, somebody who's selling apparel for this type of use.
Correct. For dirt bikes.
Yeah, because we don't actually have anybody, well, you got like Tractor Supply has those little mini bikes there, but I don't know if that qualifies for what this is.
It could be a takeover. On that statute, I think it's broad enough to, I mean, if you have a dozen or so of those individuals doing that, then yeah.
All right, so that's probably one of the few vendors of the actual machinery that we have in town of it, and then the gear that goes with it. So, okay.
I mean, candidly, I don't know if you have to do that.
No, you don't have to.
I mean, I don't know what the, what's the benefit to note or having language inclusive in there for certain, because what if we get another vendor that comes into town? Like, do we have to amend it again? Or like, what's the thought process on that? I don't think the statute necessarily focuses on people selling motorcycles, quads, ATVs of that nature. This is a situation where the police want to make sure that they have the statutory ability to prosecute individuals that take over a street, that cause potential harm to the residents of this town. And I don't think any retail store would be adversely affected by the statute, but maybe I'm not seeing it the way you are, PJ, so maybe enlighten me on that.
Yeah, so let me just clarify one thing. The notification provisions are not part of the street takeover. It's part of the ATV portion of the statute. The street takeover provisions of the legislation did not require notice. So the notice right now that we have is for anyone who's selling a recreational vehicle.
Just the vehicle.
Right. And then the chief, the chief of police asked for notice requiring gasoline stations to provide a similar type notice. So, you know, that's a, the gasoline's an easy vendor to define, but this is not a street takeover notice requirement.
Any other questions? So are you going to still desire this other?
No.
Language then, so you don't, we're okay as we are?
Yes.
Okay. Everybody, you're all good?
Republican?
Huh? No, I got to ask that next. So with this, then we won't make any changes, that's as provided?
Agree.
Okay. Any of the public? Do you agree with it? Yes, no?
My Sundays would be quieter.
Evenings. That's the worst.
The afternoon, it's like awful.
They're like a bunch of bees buzzing down, up and down the Post Road from.
We have to like wait, stop our conversations if we're in the backyard until they pass because it's so loud.
I believe it. For all they go from New Haven to Bridgeport is their general route. Okay, with that all done then, nobody else wishes to speak, is there a motion to close the public hearing and go back into our regular meeting?
So moved.
Motion is made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Close, abstain, unanimous. Okay. Is there a motion to be made to approve that ordinance change?
Subject to those changes by council.
The additions. The additions. Were needed, yeah.
Yeah. So moved, yep.
Okay, motion made and seconded. Again, all those in favor?
Aye.
Close, abstain, unanimous. Okay, that's good. That one's done. Okay. Yep, that's one. Now, next month, we'll have a different one. Public participation. Public participation is any item that is not an agenda item. We allow up to two minutes per speaker. Jody Deitch.
So, just to give a brief history, at the July Board of Selectmen meeting, there was discussion and decision that a statement would be issued by the first selectmen denouncing the racist anti-Semitic hate flyers that were distributed during the town's July 4th celebration. At the September meeting, Mr. Ziole was asked about the statement, to which he replied that it was sent to the New Haven Register. At 9:00 AM on September 12, I sent a Freedom of Information request via email to the first selectmen, quote, "requesting the opportunity to inspect or obtain copies of public records that are communications, including emails between your office, including from you and your administrative assistant, Ann Denny, to the New Haven Register between the dates of July 1, 2025 and September 10, 2025." At the October 8 Board of Selectmen meeting, I questioned him on the status of a response. On October 17, this is what I received. If I can get it on here. Find my spot here. As you can see, it's a statement with no information on it, such as a date, an email address, proving that it was submitted to any news source, nor is it signed by anyone, even though Jim clearly stated he sent it to the New Haven Register. This piece of paper could have been written up anytime, including right after the October meeting. So the evidence is clear that no statement was ever submitted to the New Haven Register nor any other news outlet. The New Haven Register's letter to the editor policy clearly states an email submission, leaving us to conclude that our statement, our first selectmen lied about submitting this statement. This, coupled with the Republicans having their headquarters opened on the holiest Jewish holiday of the year, makes one wonder where our leadership stands on representing all members of this town. Thank you.
Good evening, Dan Fitzmaurice, 831 College Road. Tonight, I want to begin by acknowledging the car crash on Route 34 last week. Dante McClashy lost his life and four others were injured. My heart is with their families and everybody affected by this tragedy, and of course, I want to thank the police and fire departments for their quick response in keeping us safe. But this wasn't an isolated incident. Residents have been raising concerns about road safety for years, something they've repeatedly asked this Board of Selectmen to take seriously. And that's why tonight I want to bring up a broader issue, which is the importance of listening and then acting on what you hear. The ideas and concerns residents share with you should guide your decisions and your priorities all the time. The next major opportunity to do that is through the town budget. While the Board of Finance will draft it, your leadership right now sets the direction for what gets included. We're in a position of real financial strength as a town. As of the 2024 audit, Orange has about $8 million more in their savings reserve than most towns do. We finished the year with a $3.7 million surplus and maintained our AAA bond rating. That gives us room to make thoughtful investments that reflect what our residents need and value. And of course, our community can share feedback during public hearings in the spring, but by then, most of the decisions are already made. That's why now is the time to listen. I hope each of you will find new ways to actively engage our neighbors to generate their ideas and concerns right now. Host a coffee hour, talk with families at the playground, send out a quick survey online, or revisit all the emails you've received over the last couple of years. The Board of Selectmen does not write the budget, but you helped define its priorities. And if you listen now, the actions in this budget can truly reflect the needs and values of our community.
Good evening.
Good evening. Eric Meason, 373 West River Road.
Just write it on there. So Ian has a record that, who spoke?
I just wanted to speak briefly in response to something I was talking with Mr. Goldblatt about a couple of weeks ago, which is also related to many of the topics of tonight being road safety. And there was a conversation about the potential for Orange to start implementing automated traffic cameras in some of these locations to help try to reduce accident rates. And I just wanted to raise awareness and the question to make sure that the safety and privacy of Orange residents is taken into account when these systems are put into place. The most common system that's being used today is by a company called Flock. The problem with the Flock cameras is that while they do provide automated enforcement and a good array of being able to see people who are going through a red light, these cameras also capture all vehicles that pass through their field of view. They make a data log of everyone who goes by them, whether or not this person is committing a crime. And Flock makes this data available to anyone at the highest bidder, both public and private, including the ability to sell this data to international customers. So you can conceivably have other governments who are now able to buy locational data on American citizens that's collected by our own systems, which are intended to provide a, in my opinion, false sense of safety on automated enforcement versus having an officer in place, where an officer will not interface with a civilian unless there is some sort of a law being broken. These cameras will collect data on everyone who happens to drive by and then provide it to the highest bidder. And there are instances that have happened in the last several months where these cameras have been used to track people through into other states where they were believed to be committing a crime that is criminal in their home state, but not in the state that they were traveling to. And this is another privacy concern where, thank you. No problem. Thank you.
I will say, just so you know, don't run away so quickly, this is going to be the item discussed at the December Selectmen. It will be a public hearing, just exactly as you just witnessed for the street takeover one. And when it's that, you have more time to speak on it because it is the public hearing for it. I'm going to ask you, though, you make some comments that this happened, you know, it could be sold, or it could have happened, but somebody going from one state to another. I'm going to say, I think this whole board and the audience even will find that of interest, but make sure that you have.
I can reference.
Backup to that, please.
I can reference.
So we'll see you in December.
Thank you, sir.
Hello, Lauren Gray, 205 Wilson Road. Don't start my time yet. I gotta write it down. Okay, ready. I'm good, I'm Lauren Gray. I'm here to speak on a couple of topics I've talked about before, including respect, transparency, accountability, and service. The Board of Selectmen is elected to serve the entire community of Orange, and that service means making policy decisions, representing everybody, and even helping residents navigate the complexities of local government. It is a commitment to ethical leadership and doing what's right for all of us, and it means working together to move our town forward. So I'm here to encourage and ask that every board, including the first selectmen and the Board of Selectmen, to engage with all constituents, even when people ask tough questions, even when they ask the same questions over and over because they're not getting the answers they deserve as constituents. Recently, it was said that Old Tavern Road, Ballfields, the community courts, the pool, and some other areas in town were in dire need. As a mom, a volunteer, and a public servant, when I hear or I know that something is in dire need, I get right to work to fix it. And I do my best to fix things before they become even bigger problems. I know we just had a local election, and you know what? We're a really active and passionate town, and I'm really grateful to live here. And that's why, to me, it was really disheartening to hear a member of the Trump administration speak here recently at last month's meeting to seemingly discourage people from speaking out at public meetings. I'm here to do the opposite. I'm here to ask everybody to come speak it, speak up, ask questions, and please ask them again if you don't get answers. And that goes for everyone. Attend every single meeting that you can. You can watch them online. Thanks, OGAAT. Email in your questions, and most importantly, please stay engaged, please stay informed. The town calendar is on the website for every board. This is our town. Every elected official serves us, and it's up to us to make the town that we want. This is how we do it, by speaking up together. Thanks.
Oh, okay. Announcements. Who, Mitch, you had a, didn't you have a recycle thing besides your appointment?
We had a very successful shredding day last month. We had beautiful weather, and we, even though we were not as overwhelmed as we've been in the past, I think people, a lot of people have gotten rid of the boxes and boxes and boxes and stuff, we still collected over 9,500 pounds of paper to be shredded, almost completely filling the truck. A number of electronics were also collected, and 30 mattresses as well. We thanked the Lions Club for collecting most of those mattresses and bringing them over to the community center. Plus, we had successful collections by the Drug Takeback that was in front of High Plains that day, as well as the Orange Community Women and the Buy Nothing Orange Group also collected a lot of materials and things. So I want to thank everybody for their participation, and I know that for some people, they can't wait, so I'm going to tell you now, April 11 will be our next shredding day. That, and the reason I know that now is because of two reasons. One is our shredding vendor is in high demand, especially in the spring. So we had to lock in a date, and we also needed to lock in a date with the Regional Water Authority because we're going to do the Haz Waste as well. And we were able to find April 11 work for everybody, so that's going to be the next collection date. The only problem with that will be that the Drug Takeback is based on a national calendar, and that'll be, I believe, two weeks later. So it won't be in sync with them, but the mattresses, the paper, and the Haz Waste and the other groups I already mentioned are all on board for April 11. Thank you.
Do you think the police could do that anyhow, though, even though the actual day is here? All of your stuff is here, because we do have the box for Drug Takeback in the lobby at the police department anyhow, so what difference does it make if they're two weeks?
I talked to Officer Bailey about that, and she and I, you know, talked about this a while ago, and she thinks they're pretty much, as far as the national day, it's kind of, they do it twice a year also. As you can tell, they seem to be locked in, but Jim, I'm willing to go back and see if we can get them to do either a separate one or one with us, because it does work out well. People come with a lot of different things in the car.
Did they get a lot of drugs?
I think so. I mean, I can't really tell what the numbers are. There were people stopping by for sure.
But I mean, there were people using it.
Absolutely. Absolutely, yep.
I got a phone call yesterday. A man, his brother passed away, who had been fighting cancer and in the last couple of weeks went really sour, and they have a lot of drugs. And he called me yesterday and asked me if the police department, I said, yes, there's a box, you put them all in a plastic bag, tie it shut, and it's in the lobby of the police department. So, I mean, it's neat other than just that, those two weekends, but it seems they could do it since they have it, the service available year-round in the lobby. So, whatever.
We can check on it.
Whatever. Maybe you could get the Lions Club, too. They can take glasses. They do have their box in the front of the community center. So, got asked about that in the last week or ten days also. Anybody else for announcement?
I was just going to remind the public that I don't always like the job of ringing the bell, but it's been given to me to ring the bell. So public has two minutes, so when I ring it, don't be mad at me.
We have a few. I only have one passing of a person. If anybody else has somebody, I don't know, but Barbara Maritz, who was a wonderful resident of our community here for many, many years, had a battle of illness for quite a few months and members of the church across the street, and she passed away. And Barbara and Dr. Maritz are wonderful, wonderful people, and unfortunately, her time came. So that's the only one I know. If anybody else has any other passings, but our thoughts are with Dr. Maritz and the kids. Friday, November 14 is the swearing-in ceremony for all newly-elected officials at 4:30 at High Plains Community Center.
That's another timer.
Thursday, thanks, John. Thursday, November 20 is the holiday market from 3:30 to 6:30 under the pavilion at High Plains. Under the pavilion?
Yeah, Aunt Marie.
I thought she had it in the gymnasium.
No, it's outside.
Oh, okay.
And she says she has a farm vendor coming.
Yeah, friends of mine. Thursday, November 27th is Thanksgiving Day. Thanksgiving, Happy Thanksgiving, and all town offices and the transfer station will be closed on Thanksgiving Day. The Thanksgiving Day Rotary Club of Orange Turkey Trot will begin at 8:00 a.m. at High Plains Community Center. So if you're out heading somewhere or something, avoid Orange Center Road in the 8 to 8:30 window while that is going on, unless you're coming to the race, which would be great for the Rotary Club. Friday, November 28th is the day after Thanksgiving. Town offices are closed. That is a bargaining unit negotiated holiday, but the transfer station is open 8 to 4:30. Recycling schedule for the week of November 24th, the week of Thanksgiving. Tuesday and Wednesday are supposed to be the same, but due to the holiday, recycling pickup for Thursday is on Friday, and Friday is on Saturday. Be sure your bins are out by 6:00 a.m. because they may have two trucks on doing that, so the overlap. Saturday, December 6th, with a rain date of Sunday, the 7th, is the Lighted Tractor Parade and Tree Lighting. The Tree Lighting Tractor Parade will be from 3:00 to 6:00 p.m. Activities around the green begin at 3:00 p.m. The Tractor Parade will leave Fred Wolf Park at 4:30 and continue to the fairgrounds where there will be food trucks. And I think they have a requirement, if you participate, you have to stay there with your float for, I believe, an hour after, once you land there, and then people... Last year, it was really quite crowded, people going around taking pictures of all the floats. I think last year, there were eighty-five floats participated. The first year they did it, they had, I think, twenty-three, and then last year, now it's six or seven years, and it went from twenty-three to eighty-five, so that's pretty good. After the tree lighting, yes, you can go to High Plains, get something to eat, and view all the floats. With that said, also, thank you to everybody who did come out and vote. It was actually a pretty nice day. It wasn't too bad. Everybody exercised their right to vote, whether they came early, absentee, or on the day. But everybody did vote, and congratulations for all who participated in that. I was quite glad to see how many people participated. It was very good. I think when you get a job review like that, it's kinda good. So with that said, we'll move to minutes. To consider an act on the minutes of the October 8th, 2025 Regular Meeting of the Orange Board of Selectmen, are there any errors, omissions, or corrections? If so, state, page, and paragraph.
Motion approved.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Post? Stay? Unanimous. Okay. Item number one is to consider an act on request to conduct public hearing during the December 10th, 2025 Board of Selectmen meeting regarding the proposed ordinance to amend the code of the Town of Orange to add Article 6 Automated Traffic Enforcement Safety Devices to Chapter 366. We'll move that... Is there motion to move that to public hearing for December?
So moved.
Okay. All right. Before that, any questions on it? Yes?
Actually, I have several questions. First has to do with, I thought we talked last time about only bringing the automated red light cameras forward, and this particular ordinance says we're doing both the traffic cameras and the speed cameras. Is that correct? And is there a reason why that changed? Or am I imagining that? Just, that's my first question. Because I thought we were gonna deal with the red light cameras first, see how that went, and then deal with the speed cameras at a separate time. Looks like they're both being developed at the same time, because I wasn't, I didn't think that was what we were doing.
My understanding, it's one and the same. The penalty or the infraction that the cameras are seeking to enforce is one of two things. Either a car that is going ten miles above the posted speed limit, ten miles or more, or that runs a red light, a steady red light. So I don't understand the statute as providing two separate devices.
Okay. I was just, I thought we were led to believe that, and that's fine. I want to clarify it now so that we don't get to the public hearing in December and people, unlike me, be surprised, so we can get that publicized that way. That's fine.
So I'm happy to walk through the ordinance now, if the board likes.
Actually, if you could, Owen, I think that would help answer some of the questions we have.
Sure.
I have, at least.
I'm happy to do that. So I circulated a memo to the board, and I won't read that verbatim, but I'll go over the highlights. So this is an ordinance to add a new Article 6 to Chapter 366, the only chapter I seem to be working on for you guys. And the board's authority to adopt this is Public Act 23-116. This act allows municipalities to use speed cameras and red light cameras, which the act calls Automated Traffic Enforcement Safety Devices, if adopted pursuant to an ordinance that meets the act's requirements, and if a comprehensive traffic safety plan is approved by DOT. So before this specific legislation, the only time that you could use one of these devices was in a DOT work zone, so the act expands the use of the devices. An Automated Traffic Enforcement Safety Device is a device that is designed to detect and collect evidence of alleged violations of an ordinance that's adopted by a municipality by recording images that capture the license plate, date, time, and location of a vehicle that's either exceeding the posted speed limit by ten miles or more, or runs a red light. It allows municipalities to enter into agreement with vendors that design, install, operate these devices. The act also requires DOT to promulgate or publish guidelines for municipalities that they need to follow when coming up with your initial comprehensive safety plan or any amendments to that plan. So, you can't, a municipality can't start using these devices unless you have an ordinance in place, and then you have to develop a comprehensive safety plan, and then there has to be a public hearing on that plan. And then, in the case of Orange, the Board of Selectmen have the authority to approve the plan. Once that happens, the plan has to go to DOT for DOT's review, and DOT will review the plan in accordance with their guidelines and the various factors. And in high level, the plan has to identify locations for the proposed cameras, and it has to provide documentation to support the locations that are selected. So my understanding is the Police Department will work on that, possibly with a vendor, if a vendor has been engaged by the town at that time. The ordinance, excuse me, the legislation has multiple requirements that the ordinance has to have. I'll give some of the highlights. Number one, that the cameras must be operated by a person trained and certified to operate them. Number two, that the motor vehicle owner violates the ordinance if a camera detects that the vehicle's driver either exceeded the posted speed limit by ten miles or more or ran a steady red light. The cameras must be used for only identifying ordinance violations. There's a thirty-day grace period, so to speak, for once a camera starts operating in a location. Any violators will initially get a warning as opposed to a citation. The legislation also requires that the towns have a citation process in their ordinances, which the town already has. The legislation requires that fees and fines can be paid electronically. It also requires that a police officer or an employee within the Police Department or a traffic authority review and approve any recorded images for, before a citation can be issued. And finally, the legislation sets forth a handful of defenses that the motor vehicle owner can assert to challenge a citation. There's an appeal process that will follow the town citation procedure, or a hearing officer will have to hear that. There's reporting requirements if these cameras and the plans get approved. And then, the last thing I'll highlight is there are some privacy provisions. Personal identifying information is not supposed to be, it has to be destroyed within thirty days after initial collection, and it's not subject to FOIA requests. So that's the high-level summary of the legislation. Hopefully, that helped.
Answer you?
So, couple of things. So how do we, and this goes back to Eric who spoke in during public hearing, how do we control what information is provided? I mean, you know, from these companies or even the Police Department, I would be more worried about the companies as to information to be disseminated. And I thought about it, and without exposing too much information, a member of my family had a ticket from out of state at one time similar to this, and received, I'd say, no less than twelve letters from attorneys wanting to represent the member of my family if they had to go to court. And so I'm wondering, so obviously, some information is revealed. I'm just not sure what is legally revealed and what is not, and, you know, I guess if you are cited, I guess that's public information. But if you're cited, how much of that information is out there besides just, you know, your name and at least the address, and it goes on from there? So I do have a concern, you know, about the confidentiality or what is legally required or allowed under FOI, which is mentioned in here. I saw the information that's in, so that's a question I have.
Yeah, so I can partially answer that. I can't give you the specific what data is collected and possibly disseminated, but I neglected to say that DOT, under the legislation, is required to adopt model privacy policies that, you know, if the town proceeds in this course, part of the process is you will have to adopt, you'll have to adopt the town's own privacy policy that has to at least meet DOT's standard, if not, you can go higher. I haven't studied that portion yet because we haven't gotten that far.
Right. So the way I understand what you said before, then, we have to, we don't have to do anything. If we adopt this code, which you're putting forward to us today, and we're gonna act on presumably in December, or at least have a public hearing in December, if that passes, that doesn't mean we're gonna have speed cameras the next day. We then have to put together a plan to say where those speed cameras and red light cameras would be, based on information that the Police Department is putting together now.
Right.
And that has to be sent to, excuse me, that then has to be sent to DOT for their approval, so we're still a ways away, even if we approve this.
Yes.
The vendor that sat with us, who was, he's the re... Again, we watch how we say, what we say. The vendor that came to recommend his services. He was the one who explained he wanted this, if you go back three months, when I said we needed all these different steps done before it would get approved.
Right.
Representative then sat there and said, no, I want, he wanted, was pushing, and Owen was in the room, pushing to get the ordinance done first because he wants the ordinance done so that he can sign a contract to be the vendor of choice with the town. And that's why, what I brought up last month about there are other vendors. Now, do you want to consider using the same vendor as your neighboring towns on each side of your boundaries for continuity goes with, or do you want to consider others? I don't have that answer at this time, but that's why I threw that out there. But it bugged me a little bit when he pushed for us, we have to do the ordinance so that he can kind of sign the contract and be the vendor of choice.
We have to do the ordinance for anybody to be the vendor, whether, we passing this ordinance...
We do the ordinance, and then...
Has nothing to do with who's gonna be doing the actual work.
And, thank you very much. That's what I'm trying to carefully dance around. And it kinda goes to what the gentleman in the back of the room spoke to a little bit earlier. And then, Mitch, you kind of back it up a little bit with somebody that you know got a ticket and then got solicited by twelve attorneys.
Yep.
How did those twelve attorneys, maybe there were more than that, maybe those were the twelve that have somebody that sends out a letter, you know, get this information? And this kinda leads to what the gentleman in the back of the room said. So these are things that need to be addressed at next month's meeting. So we're not gonna take questions on this, we're gonna move it to next month, which then you will have a...
I told you there are other towns we can consult, the companies that they...
Well, that's why I'm asking, because like Milford, West Haven, New Haven have, I believe, from what the chief told me, similar vendors. There's two vendors, one that does a lot with the traffic cameras and with the, then one with the license plate readers. Then you get this one who's promising you two new license plate readers if you go with their company over here and all. So there's a lot of pieces that I'm not saying at this moment, but...
But you can do that, like, that's up to you.
It's, we're gonna know more about it for next month. I can assure you of that. Yeah. It's, I mean, it's a good process, but to tell me that you want the ordinance so that you can be the vendor of choice, we have to approve who the vendor's gonna be. We're only, we're only doing an ordinance at this point in time.
Right.
I would assume we'd get a couple competitive bids, like we do with other...
You would think. One is that name that that man used, I've heard that Flock name.
They're a provider in Milford.
But, okay, so there you go. So that's one of the names that I have heard bantered around. I think we'll learn a lot more about this. And then, he did tell us the day that we met with him, that it potentially, some of us know, all of us know how the state of Connecticut moves. It could be three months, it could be eight months. That's the state of Connecticut on that part. That's exactly, that's his words, not mine. So, anyhow.
And Owen, the safety plan is created by the Police Department?
And this, and the vendors.
Yes.
Yeah.
And then it goes up to DOT for approval?
Yes.
That's first, right?
After we do it, then it goes to DOT.
You have a public hearing, this board has to approve the plan. If approved, then you submit it to DOT for their review.
Yeah.
So are you guys stuck? Like, once the ordinance passes, you kind of have to move forward? Or what if you decide...
No, 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 no.
So you don't have to? The ordinance is...
I think, and this is kinda where we're going here, why I brought up the question about the vendors, the ordinance is the ordinance. Then, the opportunity to consider none or a dozen vendors whoever may solicit. I don't have that answer at this time, but I'll guarantee you that there's people out there that monitor this stuff and solicit. So, yeah.
Owen, I got two other questions for you. Before we go to public hearing, I wanted to clear a few things, clarify a few things. One, you mentioned in your synopsis that the owner of the vehicle would be cited. If the, if there's someone else driving the vehicle that's not the owner...
It's the owner.
It's the owner.
Yeah.
Interesting. So if the vehicle is lent to another family member who is the speeder in the family...
You're still on the hook for it.
Right. I didn't appreciate that when I was drafting the ordinance, but that was pointed out to me in the office this morning.
There's no way for another driver to be the driver.
Right. It's, it's...
Somebody who got a ticket, they take your license plate.
Right.
No, I get it, just, you know...
If it was an officer standing at your car window is one thing.
Right.
Camera...
So I charge your kid...
Correct, correct. The last question I have is, you've mentioned the statute several times, and obviously the statute gives us parameters. Are those parameters set in stone to the point where, you mentioned, and it's in the draft ordinance, that if you exceed the posted speed limit by ten or more miles per hour, do we have flexibility or any parameters in that if we decided that we wanted less or more than ten miles per hour?
They said you could set it. Did he? You know, I'll have to look at the legislation. I know it says ten or more in there, I don't know if there was flexibility, but...
So the reason I'm asking the question now is because, personal thought, coming down Orange Center Road, which is a thirty-five mile per hour speed limit, if Orange Center Road is one of those places where there's a speed camera, I can imagine if it's ten miles over, I mean, somebody goes forty-five, forty-six miles an hour, we're gonna have a ticket a minute.
Everybody in this room probably...
Multiply that times the number of minutes in a day, number of days in a week, I think we would overwhelm. My thought was that, this is just a personal thought, that maybe make it 15 miles an hour, if we have that latitude. And then, I raise it now, because if we go to public hearing, and it says 10 miles an hour, and at public hearing, we get convinced that it should be five, or 15, or whatever, does that become substantial change that requires us to go back to public hearing? Or would that be something we could deal with at the public hearing? That's why I raised it tonight.
Yeah, no, good question. I will, I will look into that. I have the legislation with me now. I won't hold everybody up, but I'll peruse it if there's no further questions on me.
Is it worth then, if we can't have an answer tonight, is it worth then, and can we do this? I would put it out there to make, it's my own personal thing, may have no second, to make a motion that it be 15 miles an hour rather than 10 miles an hour of the speed limit, if that is, if that is acceptable. And then, when we actually publish it, it says that, and if not, we go with the 10, if that's what statute says.
I mean, I'll just, I'll read, I'll read from the statute right now. An ordinance adopted under this section shall specify the following. One, that an Automated Traffic Enforcement Safety Device shall be operated by an Automated Traffic Enforcement Safety Device Operator. Two, that the owner of a motor vehicle commits a violation of the ordinance if the person operating such motor vehicle, A, exceeds the posted speed limit by 10 or more miles per hour, and such operation is detected by an Automated Traffic Enforcement Safety Device, or B, fails to stop such motor vehicle when facing a steady red signal on a traffic control signal, dot, dot, dot.
That's the state?
I think you're probably, I think you're tied to 10. I mean, usually, you can't go, this is not a protection thing, so we're not, I think you're tied to 10, but I'll think about it, and I can advise the board. But I think, I think 10 or more, yeah.
I mean, I may be alone in my thinking, but I just, I've liked the idea. Don't get me wrong. I think we should have, you know, unless I'm convinced otherwise, at public hearing, and certainly keep an open mind, you know, just, I'd like to see us go forward with a public hearing. I'd see us go forward with a public hearing on the red light camera. I'd see us go forward on the speed camera, although, like I say, it wasn't until just the other day that I realized we're actually discussing that tonight.
What did they say?
Yeah, well, and so, you know, my thought is that if it's possible to increase that to 15, that's my opinion. There may be no support across the table. I don't know.
How about, Owen will research it. If there is flexibility, he'll let us know.
But, but it has to be, it has to be published at a certain point.
Because you could.
It says 10 or more.
I understand, but, all right. If you, John, if you feel, if the board feels that that's something we can craft after the public hearing without having to go back.
Renotice.
Through renotice, then that's fine.
Is it more restrictive or less restrictive?
Yes.
I think it's less, because here's what I was.
I think it is less restrictive.
Which is what you want.
Yeah.
Because you don't have to renotice.
10 or more, because what if we decide we want to put one on narrow lane at some point?
Right.
Which is 30, or 25, I don't even know what it is. But, we want it 10 miles per hour there, but we want 15 on Orange Center. That gives us the flexibility to still implement the 10. So, if we say 15 now.
Right.
Then we'd have to revisit everything.
To go back to 10.
To go back to 10. So, 10 or more, I think, gives us more flexibility, which is what you're looking for.
Right. But, in listening to what Owen read, and I'm not the lawyer, he is, when he says 10 or more, to me, it means, that means if you're, if you're 10 or more miles per hour over the speed limit, you get a ticket.
All right.
Right.
Will you clarify that?
No, that's correct. As the statute, it provides 10 or more. So, I mean, the question is, can it be 11 or more under the ordinance? It certainly can't be nine.
Right.
So, I will.
I know.
I will, I will research that the next two days and get back to this board, so.
Okay. So, then, once again, can we go forward with the ordinance as written and make a change such as that at public hearing and not have to go back to public hearing? Or is it worth passing this to public hearing tonight, giving the town attorney the authority to give us the flexibility?
Mitch, the public, the public hearing is where you're going to get the input from the audience, and you're going to craft other, possibly craft other considerations from the input at that public hearing. So, I would think that if you get that answer, that it could be, as you're saying, 15 as opposed to 10, that would be part of the crafting at that public hearing, where you're taking input, because you're there to take input from the public. So, then, the ordinance actually wouldn't be finalized, potentially finalized, until after that public hearing, if there's input that you think might have merit.
And I agree with that, Jim, 100%. My only concern, and I'll say it again, is that if that is considered a substantial change, yo, let's put this way.
You would continue, you would continue it.
Okay. I mean, if we can do that, that's fine. I just want to make sure Owen's comfortable, because he's the guy who's going to go to court if we get challenged.
You can just make it as flexible as possible for us.
I think you could continue it, if, once you have significant input.
Yeah, you don't have to, you don't have to close it.
No. It's like a, like a hearing for any other things we do.
Also, is there any provision, we have a volunteer fire department, and when they're responding, they're probably exceeding the speed limit? Is there any provision where they would not be held to this standard and get a citation?
Then that would be under the review process, wouldn't it?
Yeah, what, okay. So, the cops must, yeah, review.
Because they have to be reviewed by.
Authorize the citation.
Police officers are doing the reviewing.
So, that would be waived at that point?
Yeah, I don't, I don't think the, I think that would apply, right.
Last thing you need. All right. With that said, is there a motion to move this to public hearing at the December 2025.
So moved.
Board of Selectmen meeting. Motion was made and seconded by Carangelo Shanley. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you. Owen, you're going to look into that?
Yes.
Either may or shall, kind of a question there. All right. To consider an act on request to approve the tax refunds totaling $7,093.83. Is there a motion on that?
So moved.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Post? Stain? Unanimous. Pension Board.
Pension Board meets next Thursday, November 20th, in this room, 7 o'clock.
Fred Wolf Park.
As you know, BL completed their master plan. That master plan has been submitted to the town, so at some point, we will present it to the Board of Selectmen.
Okay. Anything else? Is there a motion to, sure, motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn at 8, whatever it is there, 5:00, 7:57.